Is there a motion to open the public meeting?
So moved.
There are second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We are open.
Aye.
With that, the Pledge of Allegiance, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public
for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Liberties. Justice.
And Mary, we will be voting through board docs. Everyone should be logged in by now. We'll go first to 4.1, Public Input Number One. So if there's anybody here from the public that would like to ask a question or state a fact or anything, that would be the time to do that. You just raise your hand in the chat room and Mr. Fisher would unmute you, state your name, and then you would have three minutes. With that, Mr. Fisher, are there any hands?
There are not.
Okay. The President's comments, 5.1. We do have comments tonight. We would like, as a board and myself, to acknowledge Susan Schaefer, who potentially could be having or is having her last meeting with us this evening as a board member. She's been on the board since July 1st of 2018, so we will miss you, Ms. Schaefer, which... Do I don't see her? I'm looking. Did she not get back in yet?
She's, I don't think she's on yet.
She didn't get back in yet. Okay, so I'm gonna table that and we'll come back to it. I thought she had gotten back in, so I apologize for that. So we're gonna table table that and we will come back to it. We will go to the Superintendent's Report and then we'll come back to 5.1 when Ms. Schaefer joins. So, Mr. Nichols.
Thanks, Brian. So I just wanted to, it's sort of an end of the year report. I don't have anything specific to address, but I thought I'd talk a little bit about end of the year COVID numbers, talk a little bit about what the summer's gonna look like, then touch upon our tentative thinking for next fall, and that'll be it. So as of today, the total number of student cases in the district of COVID was 52. So out of roughly 1,000 students in the district, we had 52 COVID cases, which is, I think, a relatively low number. The breakdown was four at the Learning Center. It was 11 at the elementary school and 37 middle school, high school. We have seen a significant downtick in the number of cases. The test positive rate, seven-day average in Suffolk County as of today, was 4 tenths or 4 tenths of 1%. So as the vaccination rates continue to increase, hopefully those numbers stay low. Our tentative plan for summer facility use is it's pretty much business as normal. So we are allowing the facility to be used as we have in past years. We're prioritizing community use where it benefits our students. We do have some language in there about within the facility use form that our attorneys added that says that outside groups will comply with any COVID guidance that comes down from the state or the Department of Health. But again, we're planning on opening up and we've done that with regard to summer use. The tentative thinking with regard to next year, I wish I could give a more a more sure answer, but at this point, we're gonna continue to do what we've always done, which is to monitor the conditions regionally, nationally and internationally, along with the available science and the guidance that comes down from the state and the Department of Health, and take all that into consideration with, in making a decision. I would like to think that September will be a return to normal. And if you look at past pandemics going back to 1918, I think the concern is that there will be some type of reemergence next winter, in the fall and winter. We hope that as the vaccine rolls out and eligibility for the vaccine is expanded, that the likelihood of a reemergence is not great. But if you're following the news, the latest strain of the virus is really more, it's having more of an impact on our younger population. So my thinking is that a critical piece with regard to what school looks like next year will be whether or not access to the vaccine is expanded to include students 11 and under. Right now, it's 12 and up. And I'm hopeful that that is the case and that, you know, come September, eligibility is expanded. And if it's not, as per my previous comments, we'll continue to operate prudently and thoughtfully and look at all the information that's available to us and make decisions that we think are in the best interest of the community. So that's sort of an end of the year summary. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any board questions for Mr. Nichols?
Um, I have one that I don't expect you to answer on the spot, but might be interesting just to touch base on at the next meeting would be just kind of how many students we ended up with in the district and did we see kind of an, we saw some influx at some point, but did that maintain through the end of the school year and what we anticipate the population may be coming into the next year? And again, I don't expect you to answer it now, but as you're going through all this, I think it just might be interesting to get that update.
Yeah, I can report to you at the July 12th meeting on that.
Perfect. Thanks.
Yeah. Any other board questions for Mr. Nichols? Are there any public question, questions from the public for Mr. Nichols? I don't see any hands. Okay. So just jumping back a step, because I tied him 5.1. Now that we have Ms. Schaefer here, I was speaking, Ms. Schaefer, and you weren't even here, and then I realized there was no box. So we want to congratulate and thank Susan Schaefer as a board member for being here on her last meeting. She's been on the board since July 1st of 2018. We're definitely gonna miss you, Susan. We'll still see you around, but we just won't be seeing you on as many Monday nights. So I thank you. It's been great being with you. And if anyone else from the Board or Administration would like to say anything, now would be the time for Ms. Schaefer.
I just want to thank you for, oh, go ahead.
You guys go.
Alex?
Oh, I didn't mean to jump in, but I will jump in and say that Sue has been a great board member. She's become a good friend and I'll miss her very much.
Chris?
I just echo that and I, you know, and particularly I can speak to this when your kids have graduated and you come to realize that you don't necessarily have to spend as much time thinking about the school district. To volunteer your time to do so anyways is particularly special. And thank you so much. Your input and guidance has been invaluable, particularly during this difficult year. So thank you, Susan.
I would just like to add that I only got to spend one year with Susan on the board, so I'm a little cranky with her about that. But it's been an amazing year. I found her to be, she never jumped the gun. She always stayed very stable. She was very open-minded. She never was aggressive. She thought about how she wanted to speak to us and give us a response. And that is not something that you necessarily learn as being a board member, but it's who you are as a person. And I was very happy to become your friend this year and work with you on the board. So I know we'll see each other at the beach and out to dinner, but I just want to say thank you for your service. And it was an absolute pleasure working with you.
Thank you. Thanks.
I just want to echo everybody's comments. Thank you, Susan. And also, I just, I've learned a lot from you. You and I kind of embarked on this around the same time.
Sorry for leaving you.
That's what it is. But in particular, just chairing the Audit Committee is a big role. And that was something that you and I, I remember at the beginning, we were like, what does it entail and what are all, you know, there's a lot to it and a lot to navigate there. And I don't think everyone necessarily understands just how much work that is. So thank you for not only being a board member, but just taking on that extra role as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to say anything? You don't have to. Just giving anyone the opportunity.
I'll just say, Susan, we're gonna miss you. I know we had a lot of meetings together and, you know, I really enjoyed you being really a straight shooter and like giving your honest opinion about everything and we valued it a lot. So definitely gonna miss you.
Thank you.
And I'll just say that, you know, I've known Susan in a different capacity. Before she was on the board, she was a parent and I had both of her children from when they were in sixth grade through graduation. So each of them, seven years. And as a parent, she was always thoughtful and kind and reasonable. And it's reflected in the types, in the type of people that her children have become. And I saw the same type of behavior and mindset during her term on the board. So I'll miss you as well, Susan. You were my friend before you were on the Board of Education. You'll remain my friend after you leave the Board of Education. And a job well done.
Thank you. You know, when you, I've always wanted to run for the board. It was interesting when I was approached to fill Tommy John's seat. And, you know, it was something I always wanted and, you know, my husband would be like, you're crazy, you know? So in, you know, I could put in my, on my bucket list that, you know, something that I've checked off was, you know, you know, doing my time and volunteering and, you know, giving my input and thinking of, you know, others, others all around, whether it's the community, the people, you know, the students, the teachers, you know, the athletes, whatever you are, you know, you have to take everything into consideration. And I do have to say that, I'm proud to say that, you know, that I was able to do that. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Susan. And I'd also like to, on behalf of the board, thank Ms. Westoff for acting as and serving as Dean of Students this year. This will also be her last meeting in that role. And also congratulations and best of luck Saturday where Ms. Westoff's getting married. So that'll be great. So we're, we were thrilled to have you this year. It was great. I know it was a challenging year. So thank you on behalf of the board.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we will move on to the Principal's Report, 7.1. Why don't we start with Mr. Malone?
Good evening, everyone. And I too want to say a big thank you to Susan for her time on the board and always being so supportive of everything we aim to do at the elementary school. It's been a pleasure working with you and congratulations, Laura. Thank you for your time. So I'm happy to say we're in the midst of celebration time for the elementary school. Last week, we had a great fifth grade moving up or fifth grade celebration on Thursday. And very appreciative to Ms. Carrero and everyone at Pearson for hosting our event under the tent out back. It was a first for us to have the event in such a venue and it was a hit. You know, the feedback I received was nothing but, you know, positives. And I think people really liked the idea of, you know, being outside. We were sort of forced to do that this year, but it worked out really well. And the kids, the kids did a great job. I think had a lot of fun with their families and friends. So that was a nice way to kick things off for Celebration Week. And here we are. We had a great field day today for the younger students. That was kind of our traditional field day. The coaches did a great job along with all the faculty and staff. Tomorrow, the older kids have their field day along with kindergarten. If the weather cooperates, we'll head down to Long Beach for the kindergarten students along with their families are invited to join us. And then on Wednesday, first through fifth grade heads down to Long Beach for the annual Beach Day celebration down there. And then we round things out on Friday, Thursday and Friday. We'll wrap it up and Friday's our last day. So, you know, all in all, there's a lot to celebrate. We've talked about the challenges this year, but I just want to send a big thank you to the faculty and staff for all their efforts and the support that we've received all along from all the board members, the administration, of course, Mr. Nichols guiding the way. And the parents in the community could not have been more cooperative with everything we tried to accomplish and everything we had to do this year, and it really led to a great year. And I'm just very appreciative. So thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Mr. Malone. So at Pearson Middle High School first, Susan, congrats. I think most of you know how great she is, but she also behind the scenes donates a lot of stuff in her time for Pearson still, even though her children aren't there anymore. So thank you so much for always supporting our children in need. So Pearson's been busy. As you can tell, my voice is shot. We had four events last week under the tent. They were big hits for the community. We had our senior night, which was brand new this year, but I think we're gonna continue on with it. Each senior got recognized with their families and friends being there. And then we had our National Honor Society outside under the tent as well as academic awards. And then our eighth grade moving up ceremony, just like Mr. Malone said. I think we might be transitioning to outdoor ceremonies moving forward as the feedback was amazing, as well as it was just a special celebration event. And it felt like a new rejuvenated light into Pearson Middle High School. The cool part about having the elementary school come over was our staff actually cheered them on as they came in. So it was a very cool experience to see the, welcome our incoming sixth grade students. We are now dealing now with prom and graduation as well as the end of the year. And Regions Week Friday, we had a PD for our diversity, equity and inclusion. Today, we decided after doing a survey with our 11th and 12th grade students due to pending weather tomorrow, because prom was supposed to be tomorrow, it will be now moved to Wednesday to make sure that there will be no rain. I know we can't make everybody happy with this decision, but it was a 70% choice of students to move it to Wednesday and have a sunny day compared to trying to stick it out for Tuesday. We are excited to have a full graduation now that things are starting to open up on Saturday on Pearson Hill at 5 o'clock. Fred Thiel will be our guest speaker and we can't wait to celebrate the class of 2021.
So just to add one thing with regard to the moving of the prom, it wasn't only rain, it was a safety concern as it related to thunderstorms. So given that the event was gonna be outside, if thunderstorms were indeed to roll through, that would have presented a significant safety risk to everyone outside, staff and chaperones, et cetera. So I felt like the survey, you know, it was Ms. Carrero's idea was good, but at the end of the day, I think we probably had to make that decision out of safety.
Great. Any questions by the board for any of the administrators in the Administration Report? All right, great. Moving on to Section 8, is there a motion for?
Well, Brian, you still have the school
Oh, I'm sorry.
Report. Yep.
The screen is small under Zoom, so I missed that. I didn't mean to cut you out, Ms. Christiane.
No, that's fine. So I am going to share my screen because I do have a short presentation. Let me just try and do that. Share screen. And let me get my presentation up. So back in April during the, one of the budget presentations, we did notify the community and the board that we did receive grant funds from the federal government. But at the time, it was very early on. We didn't really have a lot of information on what we could actually spend the grant funds on. And we really did need more information about the application process. And SED has been receipt, has been issuing this information now to us. So now it's time for us to review our plan for the use of one of these grants, which is the grant allocation that we received from the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. So on March 11th, President Biden signed into law the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. And he basically provided $122.8 billion nationally to help safely reopen and sustain the safe operation of schools and address the impact of the coronavirus pandemic on the nation's students. So New York was allocated approximately $9 billion in RFSR funds with 90% going to public schools throughout the state. Sig Harbor share is $564,859. And these funds must be spent by September 30th, 2023. So these funds, some of the funds have to be earmarked for learning loss interventions. So 20% or $112,972 must be used to measure and address lost instructional time as a result of the pandemic through the implementation of evidence-based interventions such as summer learning, summer enrichment, extended day programs or extended year programs. And those interventions must respond to students' academic, social and emotional needs while addressing the disproportionate impact of the coronavirus on economically disadvantaged students, children with disabilities, English language learners, racial and ethnic minorities, migrant students, students experiencing homelessness and children and youth in foster care. The remaining 80% of the funds may be used for a wide range of activities to address needs arising from the coronavirus pandemic. And districts are required to prioritize spending on non-recurring expenses in these areas. They're focused on developing strategies and implementing public health protocols in line with the CDC that effectively maintain the health and safety of our students and staff. So the reason why they stress prioritizing spending on non-recurring expenses is because this is really a one-shot revenue that we're receiving from the federal government, which is fantastic. And it really is going to help us do a lot within the district. But this one-shot revenue really should not be used to fund any operating expenses because basically at the end of the period of use, if we did start using these monies to fund some of our operating expenses, we would end up with a huge revenue shortfall at that time. So as a result, we really look to use this non-recurring money to really either reduce that service for capital planning purposes or for a special project. So we went through the list and we looked and we found that many of the items on the list of uses we are already doing and we're already implemented in our budget as a recurring expense. So training professional development to sanitize our facilities, purchasing supplies, improving the school facilities to reduce risk of virus transmission. We're addressing the needs of children from low-income families or children with disabilities. A lot of these children and a lot of their needs are being addressed by other grants. And, but there is also money in the budget currently to address this issue. And some of the other items that we already budgeted for every year, such as purchasing educational technology and providing health services and supports are things that are ongoing. And also our summer program is ongoing. So what we did was we focused on what kind of special project we could use the money for. And we agreed that improving indoor air quality would be something that would be a good project to use the money for, since it is also identified on our building condition survey, which is rolling into our five-year facilities plan. So there is items on our building condition survey that you'll see later on on the slides that we need to address to improve indoor air quality. So school districts that receive these funds are required to post on its website a plan by school year of how these funds will be spent. And the plan will indicate how spending is being prioritized on non-recurring expenses and what will continue beyond the availability of federal funds, including information about how local funds will be used once federal funds are no longer available in order to minimize disruption to core academic and other school programs. And districts are required to seek public comment on their plans. So as I said earlier, 20% of the allocation must be used to address learning loss. So we do have a summer learning program. We have a summer enrichment program and we, which is called the Summer Academy. So, and we also this year are gonna have a high school summer program. So we plan to allocate approximately just under $120,000 worth of the funds towards that program. So summer 2021, we're projecting spending approximately $43,000 on our summer program. Summer 2022, I'm not sure if we're gonna have a high school program yet that year or summer 2023, not sure. But we will be having an elementary program all three of those years. So program expenses would total just under $120,000, which meets our requirement of 20% to address learning loss. Now for the current school budget, meaning 2122, we did have a discussion during the budget presentations that we did include the summer program in next year's budget. So what is gonna happen is we're going to move that expense over into the Special Aid Fund just for next year. And whatever money is left over, we will have a surplus at the end of the year of roughly $38,000 that will allocate that money to fund our 2223 budget. But for summer 22 and summer 23, we will probably not include that in the budget at all during those school years. And for summer 24, we'll bring it back into the general fund budget. And we will be using local funds. This is a recurring expense, but we are obligated to use 20% of these, of these funds towards learning loss. And this is really the best program, just speaking with the other administrators, to use those funds for. The rest of the allocation, which is the remaining funds of 80%, we plan to use those on non-recurring expenses to improve indoor air quality throughout the district by replacing and repairing classroom unit ventilators. So the repair and replacement of the unit ventilators is included as one of the projects that needs to be addressed in the district's visual building condition survey. And that was prepared by the district's architects just recently. And we submitted that to the state. We will use all the projects listed on that building condition survey to develop our five-year facilities plan. And this project will be submitted for approval by the New York State Education Department and the Office of Facilities Planning, and the work will have to be completed by September 30th, 2023. So this is just the cover page of our building condition survey that we just submitted to the state. And you can see, it's very small. We are gonna eventually have a present, a full presentation to the board on everything that's included in this survey. And you can see listing all of these items down here, just, just this item on the bottom under mechanical systems, ventilation system. And this is just for the elementary school. And on the building condition survey, it did include replacing 31 classroom unit ventilators. And if you look at the plan, it does include fiscal years all the way 2021 out till 2425. And we are supposed to address every single one of these items and a plan to either, a plan to fund these items. So we will be able to cross that off the list using some of these grant funds. And this is a picture of some of the unit ventilators in the elementary school. And the building, which was originally constructed in 1946, contains approximately 31 classrooms. So the original unit ventilators were replaced in two phases. And the current equipment is 20 to 25 years old. So architects do recommend replacing these unit ventilators with high-efficiency units, which will improve airflow in the classrooms, meet current ventilation code and improve filtration with up to a MERV 10 filter, which is really fantastic, especially with, you know, all the, all the information out there related to MERV filters and the pandemic. So we are estimating that the cost of just replacing the classroom unit ventilators in the elementary school is just under $500,000. For the middle high school, this is just a page out of their building condition survey. And their numbers are a little bit smaller. There's actually less unit ventilators in the building. The only, the newer parts of the building have these ventil, unit ventilators and the older part of the building doesn't yet. We have to actually come up with a different plan for the older section of the building. So in Pearson, the building was originally constructed in 1907, underwent two extensive additions and alterations. Right now, the architects are recommending replacing 20 of these classroom unit ventilators. And the estimated construction cost of replacing those unit ventilators is roughly $319,000. So you can see, this is definitely more than our grant allocation, the $319,000 and the $493,000. So we are looking to maybe use another grant, which we did receive from the federal government also related to coronavirus. And we, right now, don't have to come up with a plan to use those funds, but we're looking to actually put both of those grants together in order to pay for this project and address, and address this item and take this off of our building condition survey. So public comment period and adoption of the plan, the plan will be posted on the website tomorrow. And public comment period will begin tomorrow and close on June 30th. So if anyone from the public has any comments related to the plan or questions, they should contact me directly and email me directly. All public comments, if I do receive any, are gonna be presented to the board at the reorganization meeting. And they will, there will also be a resolution on the reorganization meeting agenda to approve the plan. And the plan is a plan, which means it may change. And the plan is a plan, which means it may change, you know, over time, uh, depending on new information, depending on, you know, additional funds that may come in. And, uh, the plan will be reevaluated each school year to determine if any changes need to be made to the plan. So, does anyone have any questions?
Any board member questions for Ms. Bushemi? I, I think it's great. I'm glad we got the, we were able to obtain that grant. And it seems like it's going to do a lot of good in improving our facility and, and our facilities and air quality.
Definitely will.
Um, I just had one question, um, and it's more about the summer program. Um, it might be more for Matt Malone than, for Bushemi, but either one of you, um, regarding, uh, the goal to try to serve disadvantaged communities. I know that's the goal always of, you know, the summer program that anyone that needs it, um, is, you know, eligible. But do we have a sense as to whether the numbers have, for signing up for it, have proven to actually be filled with the kids that we know need it the most? Um, and if not, have we thought of any ways to kind of help that? My thought is just coming from the fact that I just remembered when, when my kids first started doing remote learning at the beginning of the year, it seemed like there were a bunch of kids in the class that really needed to be in the building. And it seemed like, um, it was because, you know, there was no shape at the end of the day or before the day. There's no childcare option that their parents couldn't get them to school and stuff like that. And I know the summer program is very limited hours and I think it's four days a week. So, um, you know, just wanted to check in and see whether we actually think we're going to be, um, serving that disadvantaged, any, any kids that seem to be at a more disadvantaged, uh, role. And if not, if there's a way that we can kind of do that in the fall, please, otherwise.
I could address that if you'd like. Yeah, um, you know, as Jordana mentioned, every year our, our summer program is, is aimed at supporting students that could use a, um, an academic boost, particularly in math and reading. This year, we actually opened the program to any students who, um, whose families wished to have them participate. Those children would have to be entering grades two through grade five. So students entering two, three, four or five. Our enrollment is substantially higher than years past, so that's a good thing. We're right around 60 students signed up right now. Um, and thanks to the classroom teachers with the additional support of Ms. Reynoso and Ms. Grant. There's been a lot of out outreach to particular families that we felt, um, could, could benefit from having their children participate. So in particular, um, children that are enrolled in our English as a New Language Program, formerly known as ESL. Many of those children, um, do have participated in the past, but this year, um, we've worked really hard to help those children attend. Maude Stevens in our transportation department is offering, um, busing to those, to those families. And that's, that's been a big plus. So, you know, there's always, there's always roadblocks for families. Our program's only a, um, half-day program, so that can create a bit of a challenge where children would come in the morning and then families need to figure out what they would do in the afternoon. But I can say that, um, the children that really need that support, they have been invited and most have taken us up on the offer.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Any other board questions? Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Bushemi.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to section eight of tonight's agenda, which is the tenure recommendations, which we're going to take in a group. Is there a motion for agenda items eight point one through eight point 10?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just want to congratulate all of them.
Yep. Congratulations to everybody. Um, it's been, we look forward to working with you in the future. Uh, with that, if there, anybody else? I'm sorry.
No, I was saying it's a really awesome group. I'm so excited.
Mary, if you could please open the voting.
Um, with board docs, the way the consent agenda works is it does it all? Or you have to do one at a time? So.
I'll do the rest. Sorry, I'll do the second section.
Yeah, for the, this item, if we could just do it manually.
Okay, sure.
Okay. And then for group nine, then we can do the whole thing. Thank you. Sandy?
I, I've had my head.
Hi, Susan Javer.
Hi, Chris Tice.
Hi, Yorgos Sabirides. Alex?
Hi.
Jordana?
Hi.
Brian D'Sessa Botei. Congratulations. Thank you.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
And moving on to section nine of the consent agenda, is there a motion for consent agenda items nine point two through nine point two five?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
I, I just wanted to note, um, we have a longstanding teacher retiring, uh, Ms. Sloan. And I just wanted to thank her for her years of amazing service. I've had, um, several of my daughters, uh, went through her classroom and I just want to thank her. She was incredible. And, um, you'll be missed and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Enjoy your retirement. Thank you very much on behalf of the board. Mary?
I opened it up.
Thank you.
Brian, can I ask a question on one of the items after we vote?
Will it affect voting?
No.
Okay, sure.
That's why I'm fine after.
I need Alex and Yorgos.
Yes.
Yorgos? Okay, good. That's unanimous.
Great, thank you. Uh, go ahead, Chris, before we move on to 10.
Um, it, it's something that I bring up every time we approve it, so I apologize for those who've heard this before. First of all, thank you for the, the, um, faculty who are working on and, um, going to be going on the class field trip to Italy. I think those trips are really enriching and wonderful. I just wanted to more just bring up a point that, um, at $4,800 for a student for an 11-day trip, that we have many families in our district that, um, may not be able to afford it. It would be hard pressed to be able to afford it. So, you know, I just, you know, asked that we continue to be committed early on to offer opportunities for maybe scholarships or real fundraising that's going to make a difference, but I would hope that it's somehow available to every student that would want to attend.
Thank you, Chris. I, I, I think everybody agrees with that. Item 10, which is the committee reports. We have, uh, we have one committee report this evening, which is the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. Is someone like to make a report on that?
Hello, that's me, Betty Reynoso. Hello, everyone.
How are you?
I just wanted to share that we had our final meeting on June 14th. And it does appear that we, uh, secured professional development for next year. We're hoping to work with the organization called We the People. We're just trying to factor in some of the details of making that happen, um, for next school year. It's a workshop that's offered to teachers and to children. The tough topics committee, um, we're looking to have film selected for next school year. And we reached out to our student subcommittee so that they could offer their suggestions. We felt that us as adults could probably come up with easily over a hundred films that we would like to see. But we thought it best to put it out there to the students who are actually involved, um, hoping that there's buy-in and attendance will increase because they're the ones selecting the films. Um, and we're also hoping to pair that with books, the actual books from the film to have conversations before and after. Ms. Carrero is looking into purchasing books, diversity and inclusion type books for next school year. That's a result of the questionnaire that was submitted to faculty in terms of, um, where they felt there was a need as far as curriculum and, and literature goes. So hopefully that will happen also for next school year. And then the last thing is our plan to meet during the summer so that we could secure dates moving forward for next year and have them on the calendar in advance of September, so that everyone will know when the meetings will take place. The general committee membership meetings as well as the subcommittees, um, when that'll take place. And hopefully get the dates for the tough cop, tough topics film series as well. In advance of the school year starting and, and our hope is to meet sometime in July or August to get that planned and finalized. And that is everything on my end.
That's great. I know it was a lot of work this year with that committee and you guys have made great strides, so thank you.
Had a great membership and involvement, so it has been very positive. Thank you.
A good year. Any board member questions for Ms. Reynoso? All right, great. Uh, moving on to item 12 on tonight's agenda, which is public input number two. If anyone is here from the public would like to ask a question, make a statement or comment, now would be the time to do it. Just raise your hand in the chat room and Mr. Fisher will unmute you. Mr. Fisher?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, uh, seeing no hands raised, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. There's somebody in the, um, chat room just posted something, guys. Sorry. Do you see it?
Yeah, I see it. It says, uh, will planners be given to the kids to write down assignments or upcoming tests? So I, I don't think at the, Mr. Malone and Ms. Carrier, we could probably speak to that.
So historically at the middle high school, we, and this parent is a middle high school parent. Um, hi Jamie. So historically we do hand out planners this year. We didn't, um, purchase them due to COVID. Um, if things are lifted and we're moving in this direction of having limited, not limited, but opening up a little bit more, we will look into doing that for students.
Great.
Okay, thank you for that. Sandy, I didn't see that when I was reading.
Okay, great.
Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to end the meeting from, uh, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mary?
Okay.
Alex?
Yes.
Alex wants to stay.
He likes longer meetings. We all know that.
Great. So everybody have a great evening. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Uh, and everybody that got tenure tonight. And thank you again, Ms. Westoff. So we will see everybody going into the new year, new school year, not the new year. So have a good evening.
Have a good evening.